Okay, we are live, kept recording.
All right. If we could stand for the pledge, please, this morning. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone. Our first order of business is minutes of our Board of Selectmen's public meeting held on November 6th. Could I have a motion to accept those minutes?
I'll make that motion, accept the November 6th meeting.
In a second. You want here, second?
Oh, I'll take it, yeah.
All right.
I thought, I thought I read.
No, no. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll just go on and say yes, but I just want to put in second now.
Okay.
If you guys say it's right, I'll believe you.
Our first order of business is the Heritage Commission Community Awards Presentation.
Is this one on? So Vicki Donovan, Donovan, expresses her deepest regrets for not being able to attend due to funeral in Maryland, and that Vicki Donovan, Chairman from the Heritage Commission, had asked me to share her thoughts with you today.
It's the other microphone.
This one? All right. So, the Belmont Heritage Commission and the Belmont Board of Selectmen proudly announced its 2024 Belmont Community Heritage Award winners. This annual event recognizes individuals, organizations, and businesses who have contributed to our heritage or provided a service to enhance our community. The exceptional commitment to Community Award goes to a small group of persistent, dedicated members of the Belmont community who volunteered many hours to get the GOT Lunch Belmont and Friends Program running and off the ground. It's not easy to start something new, but these volunteers saw a need and the Belmont children of our town benefited. The GOT Lunch Belmont and Friends provided essential support by offering free weekly meals, meal deliveries throughout the eight to 10 weeks of summer vacation. Your efforts in starting this program, which improves the health and well-being of children, go way about, beyond ingratitude, go way about, go way beyond the gratitude this award bestows to your group. Hard work and determination for such a worthy cause for the children of this community of Belmont is very much appreciated. This award is just a small token of our appreciation, but it was an easy decision to recognize all of your GOT Lunch volunteers for bringing such a worthy program to our town. Thank you, Hillary Horn, Brianna O'Hara, Jean, oh, you're doing this individually. Jeanie Hibbard, Jessica Treadworthy, Sharon Champy, Chris and Sarah Arsenault, Jenna Fleck, Cheryl Wundy, Ginger Wells K., Ruth Mooney, Katrina Boucher, sorry if I'm pronouncing anyone's names wrong, Travis O'Hara, Christina Smith, John and Katie Gogel, Lori Hart, Alex Landfest, Diana Johnson and family, Lori Orbiter, Chrissy Reiser, Natalie Laber, sorry, Terri Selig, Brenda Seavy, Dana D. Angelus, and Diana Hatch. In my opinion, this is a prime example of it takes a village. The children of Belmont especially thank you as well. At this time, we invite the volunteers from GOT Lunch to receive their awards. Do you want to get a picture with anyone who was able to make it? Sharon, I mean, Ruth was mentioned too, and Sharon. And Travis.
GOT Lunch?
Huh?
GOT Lunch? See, hi there.
Hi.
Thank you, very much. A three, two, three, go.
Okay. The Heritage Commission is also proud to announce two youth leadership awards, but both award recipients are 2024 graduates of Belmont High School and both served as student representatives, one on the Conservation Commission and one on the Heritage Commission. Here to present the first leadership award is Denise Navia from the Conservation Commission.
Thank you, good morning, everyone. Do we have anybody on Zoom, Colleen? Okay, we, we.
Were you expecting someone?
We were, yeah.
Who were you expecting?
The recipient. Emily De Francisco.
I only see a Sean, and maybe that's her, I'm not sure. So no?
No, okay, all right. First, I'd like to thank, give thanks to the Chair of the Conserva, I mean, I'm sorry, the Heritage Commission, Vicki Donovan, and to the Heritage Commission for initiating this award to recognize Belmont youth who have made a positive impact on their community. And thank you, Priscilla, as a representative of the Heritage Committee, Commission. Thanks to your vision, the Conservation Commission borrowed the idea from you, the Heritage Commission, to include student representatives. Emily is the third student to serve on the Conservation Commission. According to her dad, Jeff, when Emily was young, she had a belief that a strong society should have a strong environment. This led her to wanting to help the planet. In high school, she took an environmental science class that inspired her to join the Conservation Commission. She has always been passionate about being outdoors and having a healthy environment. During her four years in high school, she was a member of the Environmental Club and served as President of the Club during her senior year. The club was very active and planned many outdoor hikes, including morning hikes up Red Hill and sunset hikes up Mount Major. She was a three-season athlete all four years in high school and was recognized by the state for being a New Hampshire Scholar-Athlete. This very busy student was also a member of the National Honor Society, the English Honor Society, and was a class officer all four years of high school, serving as Vice President during her junior and senior years. And she was also a member of the French Club, right? Right. I bought a meat pie from her, yes. Emily actually recruited her dad, Jeff, to join our Conservation Commission. He started as an alternate member and now continues as a very active full member. I had the honor of co-sharing the grand marshal position with Emily during the 2023 Old Home Day celebration. She, her parents, and brother decorated Jeff's truck, and Emily was able to secure many flower and vegetable seed packets to toss to our community friends from the back of Jeff's truck. We nailed the Queen Elizabeth wave. Have a few pictures of that. Emily, thank you for your participation with the Conservation Commission. You are a bright light, and the Commission wishes you continued success as you pursue your professional nursing career. Your caring for your patients, family, friends, and the environment will continue to shine for many years to come. Congratulations on receiving this Heritage Commission Youth Leadership Award.
Our second youth leadership recipient is awarded to Adam Rubirio. Sorry if I butcher that again. For two years, Adam held the Student Representative Position for the Belmont Heritage Commission. The Heritage Commission's goal was to have a student representative attend and participate in monthly meetings to learn more about the history and heritage of their town. Although Adam is not a voting member, he provided valuable input to the Commission. Adam was also a huge help with the Senior Citizens Soup Drive Project. He organized the players of his hockey team with their own soup collection to contribute to our food drive. Adam's involvement with the Heritage Commission proved to be insightful for its membership members as well. He was on the committee at Belmont High School researching the history of the old mascot. He asked us to participate in the discussion and to bring what background we knew about the establishment of the first Belmont High School. The partnership with the high school students and staff opened the door to many more possible discussions concerning Belmont's educational history. We thank and appreciate Adam's participation in our Commission. Adam presently attends the University of New Hampshire, and we hope he takes a little piece of his experience with the Heritage Commission with him wherever his future endeavors take him. Please note that Adam is away on college, unable to present.
Thank you all. Thank you. I will take care of that, thank you, Priscilla, very much.
Emily, can you hear us?
Can you hear us, Emily?
Yeah, I can.
Honey, you just missed it, oh, well. But I have a copy of my speech and I'll make sure I'll send it to you, okay? Oh, here's the award. Your dad's got the award right here.
The camera's right there.
Is that the camera there? Can you see it?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
And we're, the Heritage Commission is always pleased to see the high school students working with the town.
Oh, thank you, I love the town, I miss the walk around that school.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you, I'm really appreciate it.
Thank you, Emily, have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the 2025 budget updates. These are ones that we hadn't voted on because we didn't have the final numbers, correct?
So, some are.
Okay.
So, in your packet you have the breakdown.
Yep.
The Budget Committee has met before. You were able to see some of the final numbers for some of the departments that have changes to health, dental, the life, the short-term disability. So those got updated. As I was doing another second and third check in my spreadsheets, I noticed that some of the links were broken, so those got adjusted as well. So if we want to just go through each one, the first one in the water department. So, the FICA and the MEDI change. I'm also increasing the, it's essentially the rent to Laconia up from 24,000 to 28,000, and that's based on actuals and anticipating one more bill for the end of the year. Currently, right now, we are already at 24,767, and I have one more bill to come in due to Laconia. So, we're obviously going to be over what I'm already recommending for 24, so I would like to increase that to 28,000 for that.
And that's on water usage?
That's for the Belmont North side that we pay to Laconia.
Laconia?
Yeah.
But is that metered? That's metered, okay. So that's an increase in water usage?
Yes.
And that's paid through user fees?
Correct.
Yep. Okay. Do you need a motion for the new figure?
Sure, so you would, if you want to make a motion for the new, the after-adjustments number.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we accept 343,438 dollars under the water department, correct?
Correct.
Okay, do I have a second for that?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none, that passes.
The second one is the sewer department. They had a increase in pay due to an employee obtaining certification that occurred this week. So his pay, the pay line would increase to that employee, as well as the FICA, the MEDI, and the retirement would also increase.
Okay, all right. Then I'll make a motion that we confirm the 736,834 dollars to the sewer department.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none?
And then the police department had adjustments after open enrollment for life and short-term disability, and that is from there.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve 3,161,230 dollars for the police department.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none, we'll move on.
The same for the fire department. They also had changes to health insurance, life, and short-term disability and dental after open enrollment.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve 2,374,155 dollars.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposition? Okay, the next item?
The general government's, general government buildings. It appears that there was a broken link in the retirement, so that got adjusted there.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we approve the general government buildings for 513,473 dollars.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay, executive.
That had a change to open enrollment for life and short-term disability and dental.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve 418,638 dollars. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none, property taxes.
I, I'm increasing this line by 1,100 dollars because we had gotten the revised contract for Vision after you guys had met the first meeting. I had estimated what the new increase for 25 would be, but then I finally got a funding figure, and I increased 1,100 dollars.
I'll make a motion that we accept 141,216 dollars under property tax. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none. The next item is patriotic purposes. Yeah, go.
So during the Budget Committee's discussions, it was one of the members brought forward to reduce the line for the fireworks to zero, well, to a dollar to hold the line open. So essentially, they're eliminating funding for the fireworks for Old Home Day. I want to bring it to you. Do you want to show a united front and amend your recommendation to match theirs? Or do you want to leave it as, as is and have a difference of what yours was, including the fireworks, and leave theirs showing them taking it up?
Yeah, I'd say I agree with what Tracy said at the meeting, that it's politically going to hurt the budget more than saving 9,000 dollars is going to help. So, I think I would want to leave it where we left it.
It does sound like that they're going to raise the funds through volunteer, through, not volunteer, through donations? Okay? And actually, there was a person there that night that kind of indicated already that they would be willing, again, it's only sort of hearsay at this point.
What happens if they don't raise the funds?
Then there's no fireworks. They also are looking into doing the drone.
The fireworks, when we, last year eliminated it, was because of the fact that what it cost the town to clean up the mess after the fireworks, the police protection, and the.
And that was discussed at the Budget Committee that, and I think that had a lot to do with it, was it's not only the fireworks, but it's the expense, the highway department, the police, the fire. That all has to, they have to have that in their budget to be able to accommodate what's required. So I think that that was why.
Which they should if we get our budget passed and we removed it because of the default and we weren't going to have the money to fund it. But if their budget gets passed, then we should have the money to fund it. That's the way I look at it. We removed it because of the default to save the money, and now we're not on a default and we're trying to remove it again.
And I think, in Danielle's presentation, was that they're really trying to bring back Old Home Day as a.
Volunteer.
And seeking donations, as most other communities run Old Home Day purely on donations. And trying to step back what the, what the town contributes.
Correct. And I think in years past, unless I'm, it was all volunteer. It was all volunteer, I don't know how many years ago. I'm not sure why it didn't stay volunteer. Denise.
Is there any talk about a laser presentation?
There was, there most certainly was. There was talk about that, and that would be awesome, all right? If, if they, if they went to laser, I'd be all for it, because obviously, I'm not big due to animals. Okay? I'm, it does have a traumatic effect, and veterans, obviously. But that was, that was talked about.
Having fire dangers like we're having now, you know.
I wonder if we'd get a permit right now to have fireworks?
I bet you can't.
We have a long day, summer, not fall.
Yeah, yeah. So, but that, there was discussion with laser also. So, and I think that they are looking at both aspects.
Danielle's looking at pricing for the laser and the drone show.
Yes, which I think they did it in Gilmington. They did it in Andover last year. I believe they did.
And then Home Row had a, was it Weekly? And they did one, and then Pumpkin Fest had a laser show.
Did they? Yeah, yeah. And again, that would save huge money-wise, because I don't think we have to have the fire department for laser. You know, I mean, you're still, you're still going to need the police department. It obviously would lessen the highway department, but again, we haven't confirmed that, so. So, any other comments in regards to this? I mean. Go for it.
So, you have 4,000 dollars a shot of it towards.
We have 9,000 dollars, I think we put in it.
You put nine, they took out the nine.
They took out the nine.
Do you want to show a united front and go with the Budget Committee? Or stick with their number and show the five? Not really the five, but.
Right. Stick with the number that we have, we don't want to change it.
I think, I think that there's still a huge group of our citizens that look forward to that.
Oh, of course.
That it's like Old Home Day, even though we showed that Old Home Day can be much different as it was this year. So, moving forward, and I hate to use the statement of none of us politically, kind of have to cross the lines in both different, and good faith, you either leave it in there or potentially even if Danielle is confident that there may be volunteers and, and extra monies that she can abstract from above or wherever, then reduce it to 50% and go 4,000 or 4,500 instead of the nine. But I think the board really needs to recognize that that is, always was, and yes, default took us to a different place, but we're hoping we're not going to be in default. And so with that, we're bringing the unity back to the community in a different, at a different level. And then if she raises those monies, then you don't have to spend them, you can just.
Bring it back.
Yeah, quickly into that. I think that if we show what Old Home Day is, the popularity of it, how many people show up, she'll get more donations, more vendors, more income from that event. And then sooner or later, she will be on her own to do it. I mean, I was this year for if she could do it on her own, to take all the funding for Old Home Day period. I'm not for just making it a half show like we had last year.
I'd love to support fireworks if it was going to be drone. I'd have no, it's the noise, it's the, it's, that part is just, you know.
But I think it's more than you.
Of course.
I'm not trying to.
Oh, no, 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 oh, no, no, no.
I mean, you know, if they can do a laser show and get the draw and it looks awesome, then rock on. But I think, I think that Old Home Day does draw to our community. And if we want to sell the town and try to get us back into some other level, we really do have to have a draw. And I just think, you know, everybody's cutting and scraping, but if you want those people to come and respect us, then we can sell things a lot differently. We can complement both day and night.
Yeah, as I say, I'm not, I'm not saying, when I say fireworks, I don't mean it has to be fireworks. I just mean some nighttime show has to go on, because it keeps the event going all day.
Oh, I was, I'd fully support it if it was going to be laser or, or drone, however that works. That would be, I wouldn't have an issue with that at all.
I think too, if you, if you leave it as is, it shows you supported the fireworks, and it puts the, you know, the shift to the Budget Committee that they did not.
Yep.
So if you can't, we say, we support it, we put it forward, they changed it.
I guess.
Yeah, because for me, the Budget Committee Chair, she was spot on with what she said. I, I believe what she said, so, yeah, that would be my position too. But I think the, the money could be used either for the fireworks or a laser show if it was comparable, right? Then it would, just to give like an evening show and not specifically just, yeah.
And like Doc said, it doesn't mean that we don't raise the funds. If it, you know, if the budget passes and this doesn't get funded, it doesn't mean we don't raise the funds. It doesn't mean that we still have excess funds somewhere else, because at the end of the day, you still have that decision whether you want to fund it by the donations or other funds in the budget.
Yep. Well, I'll, I will support it, but I will push for laser versus, versus. Traditional, thank you.
So then you make no, your recommendations are making no action on the last item?
Right. That's right, we don't have to make a motion on that, because we're not changing anything at this point. All right, are we fine with that?
I am.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep. Chair?
Yep.
Okay, awesome. Okay, is that all for updates?
Yes, I will say that has been really the only change that they have, Budget Committee has made so far.
Yep.
So these numbers, it says after adjustments, those are the official budget numbers?
After adjusted, as of today, I guess.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, next item. New Hampshire DES Lead Line Initiative. Oh, yeah, that's the lead line thing, yeah.
Yes, so me and Craig and Brian have been hit hard these last couple of weeks with these sudden EPA and NHDES rules and regulations that we now have to adhere by. So we were in a kind of a mad dash last week to get these letters out to all of the water users. And there's a lot of information in your packets that we sent out. So essentially, and I don't know if Craig, you want to talk about this, or we can talk about this together, but EPA has changed their, the, the numbers for the lead, acceptable levels of lead in the water, correct? And I would say 99%, if not all of our line, water lines in the town are unidentified. So we have to identify them per EPA. So we have to send out these letters to all the residents to say, hey, we don't know what your line is, whether it's lead or copper or plastic or wood or whatever is in the water, in the ground. So, we have to ask them to test their water. So DES has given us the water bottles to have the residents test their water. What I'm finding strangely is people saying, no, I don't care. I know it's not lead, so I'm not going to bother, which is like, all you have to do is just run your tap water and, and test. But we have had some people come in, we're, we're not saying there's lead in the water. We're saying we don't know what the line is, please test so we can confirm whether there's lead in the water per lines. We have to try at a minimum of four times to get people to prove the lines. I obviously can't force people to, to do this. Sampling, and I give you this in the packet, and this is from Stephanie from DES, saying, sampling can. sampling can only be used to prove the presence of lead. It cannot be used to prove the absence of lead. Um, if a homeowner knows their line is non-lead but doesn't provide the town with photos and/or let you in the basement to visually inspect, then the service line will stay as an unknown material in our inventory. And that property owner needs to receive an unknown notice service line every year until the material is determined. So every year, even though they say, no, I don't care, I still gotta send those letters, we still have to determine what those lines are. Um, another way to identify and identify unknowns is by potholing at the curb stop. If Belmont has all unknowns on the utility side and if you have little to no cooperation from homeowners to get the material on their side, then potholing may be a good option to get the material on both sides. This is one of the activities covered by Loon. And now we talk money. Yes, this is going to cost us money. EPA is requiring that we replace the lines by twenty thirty-seven. So we have a thirteen-year span to replace any of the lines that are lead galvanized or.
This was coming. It's.
Well, that's not, that's not only the expense of replacing, the, the.
The inventory?
The, the inventory and distinguishing which lines are and which lines aren't. So basically, what they, what they mean by potholing is hydro excavation. So you hire a vactor for a day. So we've got, right now, we've got basically six hundred unknowns. So, so just to give you an example, to rent, um, a vactor to do hydro excavation, it's costing us right now about twenty-five hundred dollars a day. My, my, you know, my, my estimate is we could do five or six a day. So just to give you an idea of what that may cost, if that's, if that's what it comes down to. But this is all EPA, DES, the national, everybody in the state is kind of, is on the public water system.
And who's paying for the water tests, dare I ask? They are paying for the wa- oh, I'm impressed.
I was down last week and I picked up fifty sample bottles just to start.
Yeah.
And I picked up fifty prepaid envelopes, which are nine dollars and seventy-five cents a piece. So the state's paying for that, but that's the hook. We're gonna end up, if, if this all comes to fruition, we're gonna end up having to try, we're gonna end up having to budget to do that.
And there is funding available, but we first have to determine what we have for inventory. So that could be.
So people aren't doing the testing because they're afraid that if they have lead in their water, they're gonna have to pay to do whatever DES requires them to do to get rid of the lead. That would be my first thought.
I don't, I don't think that's necessarily the case.
But, but.
I think that people just have a feeling, you know, my, my line isn't from the thirties and it was hooked up. Uh, there's, there's still a lot of, we need, we still need a lot of clarification to some of this stuff before we, before we're gonna figure out what, how, which ones we're gonna need to.
When we, when we did the, uh, the water line here on the main street, was that lead?
Um, no, no, it's cast iron. We, so we did, we, we did the town and we did the trailer park.
Yeah.
Um, so we redid, um, the services, we did, we did the curb stops.
Yeah.
So we hooked up the curb stops from the house to into the house. So my initial thought was, well, we just go into the basement, take a picture. Apparently, she's saying, uh, this is miscommunication because I've, I've heard that that's not good enough. I've heard that we're gonna actually physically check the curb stop, make sure what's, what's coming into that curb stop is not galvanized or not lead. But it's like I said, when we, when we did this project, you, you wouldn't have hooked up galvanized to, to a new compression pinning area. There's just, there's, there's gonna be a lot of going on.
And how many of those curb stops are gonna work?
Um, oh.
You think so? Okay, yeah, okay.
But, but, and that's the thing, when you, when you, so there'll be a, there'll be a ten-inch hole that you hydro excavate and then you'll have to try to work the curb stuff. So there might be parts that you might have to, you may have to dig some. Cause when you're doing that, you gotta make sure that you confirm that the curb.
The curb stop is working.
But, you know, all downtown, these are all new.
Sure.
You should, you know, knock on wood.
The curb stops don't get exercised, so.
It's just gonna be a huge project that we're all gonna be, so, so for three or four years, we're gonna be working on the unknowns.
Right.
And then we're gonna have to set up some type of budget and figure out what the state's actually gonna require us to do, so.
Denise?
I assume you're meaning the threshold for the lead level has dropped, right?
Yes, I think it's what, ten?
And does the letter address the, the safety hazard, the health hazard of elevated lead levels?
Yes, it does, yes.
So does it appeal to parents and their children? You know, this is the emotional part that needs to be broken through so that they understand that there's significant health dangers of increased lead levels, not only for children, but for adults.
Yeah, the, the letter came from EPA and DES and it says, you know, why are you receiving this? What are the health effects of lead? What can I do to reduce my exposure? And then it says, you know, about getting my water sampled, what is a service line replacement? And then it, you know, it shows pictures and brings you QR codes to get to EPS's website and EPA's website. Um, so it is going to be a thirteen-year pro- project. Um, the first ones of four years will be doing our inventory. There is funding for us to be able to go, you know, do that. Um, we've already started the inventory with working with Underwood on that. And that's how we came to the conclusion of how we have so many unknowns. And then sending these letters every single year, we have to send the letters out before, uh, November fifteenth of every year. So everyone who did sample will get taken off the list. All those that didn't.
Will receive another letter, yeah.
Will receive another letter next year and then another letter the next year after that. And then you have to, you know, as we discussed with DES, what our options are because I think it is, and we have to identify the lines. So obviously, we're going to prolong having to dig and do that cost of it. And then there'll be grants that we can apply for to replace the lines if we do have any lead lines. And it will be the first number, as they said. So every state, I mean, every town in New Hampshire who has a public, uh, public water system is also applying for the same funds, probably at the same time.
And we have been, as we encounter issues with state.
You've corrected, right.
We do record, but that's the problem. So things just haven't, you know, years, things weren't recorded. As you'll see, I mean, we're gonna get to this, but we're gonna, I mean, we're, we're considering, um, doing the asset management program for the water, which will, which will also help us with this lead line inventory. Um, so when we, when we go to a house, we can take the laptop and we can just take a picture of it, attach that to the service, to the service card and just, we just gotta get up to speed here just to make this easier for, um, the future, you know what I'm saying? But we'll talk about that later.
So it'll be an ongoing project that you'll probably hear from us and the residents and, um, you know, as the state said, it's just about, you know, educating the homeowners and engaging them. And, you know, the town's not saying we have open water. All we're saying is that the service line is unknown.
Yeah, let's just, let's make it, let's.
Identify it. And if, and if you can encourage residents who are on the, the water system to just grab sample and help us identify those lines, it'll, it'll reduce our costs in the future too.
Or, or we'll know what we're facing in the future.
But let's make it perfectly clear that there, there is no lead in the water, okay? So all our, all our lines are updated. It's, it's the point from where your curb stop is into your house that is the unknown. So when you do, when, and we, and we do lead and copper samples, um, I think it's biannual now. It, it says it on the, uh, one-stop, um, testing site. We, we do do those at cer- at like ten different houses, random houses every other year or something. But, uh, by no means is there lead in the water. It, it, it could be like an old, like a, like a gooseneck that's attached to a meter or something like that, something. And there, so the water is safe.
Okay.
Anyone have any questions on that that I can provide? And, um, in the letter, Crystal is assisting the water department in taking the, um, calls and distributing the tests, uh, and giving them the information. And then emails are going to Craig and Brian, so.
Quick question, just and for curiosity, for like people like me that rent, is it only a property owner that can handle this? Or do, do the renters have the right to handle it as well?
So the letters are to the property owners. It is their responsibility.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't know if it could be bypassed, cause some of them are absent.
Well, you can ask them about it. So, hey, you have a letter?
Or a secretary, she answers better.
Yeah. Okay, um, well for RFP.
Yes, uh, Underwood released the RFP for the interconnect, the well GPW dash four interconnection project. Uh, the bid opening will be on Friday, December sixth, twenty twenty-four at ten AM here. Uh, just updating you of, uh, how that is per question.
Alright, do we have any other new business?
Um, yes. Um, in your packets, um, we were notifying yesterday that the school and, um, the school and fire department reached out to Patrick because the school is doing a, um, egg drop. And, um, I guess they do a project where they have to build a, um, a mold that will protect an egg being dropped and not break it. And at first they had asked if the fire department had a ladder that they could use and they did not. So the next tallest building in town was the mill, so the, the kids are working with this. Um, anyone know?
They're gonna be here Thursday, tomorrow?
No, I know that, oh, great. Do they have them say what they're?
I think it's, I think it was middle school, wasn't it? I, I remember, I remember that happening with my grandson. We just stood on the back deck.
One of the, one of the schools is gonna come here and they're gonna, um, the kids will draw the eggs from the fourth floor. So I just wanted to extend the invitation if you guys wanted to be here to participate. They do have a tarp that they, um, painted a bull's eye on that they're gonna, so they can safely collect the, the egg waste. Um, Patrick doesn't have to pick that up.
That was big.
Fire department is going to be here and probably be here also monitoring, um, and, and obviously.
What time is that?
It is, um, twelve-thirty tomorrow for about an hour or so. So it begins at two ten and we'll probably snap some pictures and.
The cost of the eggs.
That's why I told you, that's part of the life that, yeah.
Spend some experiment.
The goal is for them to not break, so.
Right, the goal is for them not to break, cause they're probably gonna fry some.
Yeah, I remember that little experiment off the back deck. I think we have four or five busted eggs. But we finally got one that didn't break.
And then I do have, um, Jen has a few items that she, um, wants to discuss under the other two businesses. I'll wait for her to come up.
Morning, Jen.
Hi. So I'm proposing a cash policy, po- uh, cash payment policy, which Alicia is going to write up for the next meeting, um, for approval. Just basically saying that you can't come pay your tax bill in pennies. Um, it sets deter- predetermined amounts that will accept like, um, four rolled coins, rolled or otherwise coins, five dollars, a hundred dollars and one dollar bills and two hundred dollars and five, you know, so on and so forth, just so it doesn't get, just to have the policy in place so it doesn't, um, affect our ability to conduct business because we would have to double count it and we just don't have the staff for that. Um, so no big deal on that. And I just wanna update you that since the tax bills went out on November twelfth, we've collected one million, one hundred twenty-three thousand, five hundred sixty-four dollars and seventy cents. So that's exciting.
What percentage is that collected?
Uh, it, we committed twelve, so like, ten, twelve million, so, I don't know. Math it out, I don't have Excel, so. But in general, um, it's always been said in the first week, we collect about a million dollars and we are holding true to that, so way to go Belmont.
Jen, do you know if that cash policy is commonly used with other municipalities?
It is. I reached out to my listserv about this and it, through my, um, conferences, they were like, oh, you have to put this in place just because.
That one person will come in and.
Would like to make a statement and come in and be like, I'm paying my five thousand dollar tax bill in ones or, you know, whatever. And, um, it's, it's just a recommended pol- uh, recommended practice, so.
So you have, do you come to that benefit?
No, because you're going to, we were gonna discuss it next week, or next meeting on the fourth, so, yes. Alright, thank you.
Awesome.
Anyone have any comments or?
I can understand that. I wouldn't wanna be standing there counting like thousand pennies or whatever.
Yeah, I have heard there was a resident in Gilmington who had paid his tax bill with all quarter, uh, changed. And waited in front of them to count his bill.
Yeah.
How much does a money counting machine cost?
And that's what I have also heard and me, Jen and I actually had talked about, you know, do you have a need for either a money machine, a coin hand or a counting machine? She felt that this time she did not, or that's gonna be discussed during other seasons.
So in other words, by doing this, that kinda can squash that whole theory, hopefully.
And it's only, I just only saying no to money, so.
The terms gonna come up, it's whole currency and they're gonna find if you, if they take you to court, you're gonna lose. Because they are paying you in United States currency. I don't care if it's pennies, nickels, dimes, whatever, it's American currency. So be prepared, if someone, if someone's that stupid, to be quite frank.
We'll, we'll see Chris.
Just, just to be a grind, that's all. Just to make, just to grind and, and get their attention. But if they realize we're paying you people by the hour and by the day and by the week, this, the time that this absorbs, they wonder where the tax money goes, well.
Yeah, it's just a recommended best practice to have it in place.
I, I, I realize it's a nice try, but it won't work if you get caught. If somebody, someone really wants to, got nothing else, make an issue.
Got it. Alright, old business. JSJ Auction.
Yes, um, at our last meeting, I had advised you guys that we, that the fire department did take that tanker truck to, uh, the white farm and we did receive twenty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty. Um, we do have to hold a public hearing to accept those funds. So I will notice, put that notice out because we have to put it in the newspaper. Um, anything over ten thousand dollars to accept in a public hearing is unanticipated funds, so.
So we can do that at our next meeting?
I will do that at our next meeting. The only thing that was up for debate is whether you want to just accept, will you accept the whole thing as unanticipated revenue? But the question was brought forward by the fire chief at whether you would, um, restrict, I'm just gonna say, cause I don't have the number for me, up to the ten thousand dollars for them to be able to offset the repair to. Ambulance two. So, uh, I don't know if you want to still proceed with that so that I can make that motion for you and that we make it clear that we're restricting only those funds and that the rest will, um, go to fund dollars.
I thought it was a policy of the town that any funds like this, and in the past, uh, and I have to use the police department as an example, I, rather than trade a couple cruises, I took them to the auction forum. We did very well. But that money, when it came in, went back to the general fund.
So, when, in that case, we did off, we did take those, the op- the funds received from the auction to offset the cost of the lease because in the end, that would reduce the amount that we borrowed from the tax, well, that we budgeted for the taxpayers for that lease purchase every year. So we did same thing differently. Um, I had reached out to Jean, the prior time administrator, to see what she has done in the past. She says, and her comment or recommendation was that you can use non-taxpayer dollars to get something done, that's a good way. The only thing is you must restrict that purpose of really don't buy something else with those funds, so.
Well, these are, this is taxpayer money. The, the money, those taxpayers own the tank truck and so when it sold any, any, uh, financial gain or financial loss, I mean, it was, if it hadn't been rusted out, it would probably have been worth seventy-five or eighty grand. But at this point, uh, we had a problem with it, it was with rust. So now that's tested. My opinion, mine alone, I guess, is that that is taxpayer money that we bought back. And, uh, they should have a say in how it gets spent.
Since we did with the pa- in the past with the police, I'd have no issue with it, but it's up to the majority of the board.
What about the ambulance money from the ambulance fund, is my understanding initially?
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
The money from the ambulance fund initially is my understanding.
But that money also.
No, I understand.
Is town money. I mean, we support this, cause it's pay now or pay later. That's what that ambulance fund was set up for. And it's, it served us very well, but in the same token, if we put that money, if we're in Tilton and it went back into the coffers of the town, it's the same. One pocket, left pocket, right pocket, as far as I'm concerned. I just don't wanna set a precedent that we can't live with going down the road for other departments. And selling the things.
Cause I think the Highway Department has auctioned quite a bit off in the past. Where did those funds?
General.
Okay.
I, I'm not.
No, I'm just asking. No, I'm just asking.
Everything that I've ever brought to the auction in the past, I, I've asked for funds and it was.
Goes to the general fund.
I, I've got, probably a great idea. I, I brought it up in the past and I was shot down. Yeah, it, it, it works for them, it works for you.
I thought that we did shoot them down.
My hangup is.
I wish I had that off.
Yeah, my hang, my hangup is, is that I was understanding that the special revenue fund was money that was taken, it was billed money. So it was revenue that the fire department brought in. So to me, that doesn't necessarily equate to tax.
So to me, that doesn't necessarily equate to taxpayer money. So I think letting them use it to offset a bill like Jean's email says, then that's just, um, you know, a way to offset it. But I don't, I think that it's the fire department's money. They did the work, they earned it, they bought the truck.
And they were paid, and they were paid for their job and they were paid for them by the taxpayers of the town of Belmont. That fund was set up as a savings fund, so on, on big items like a fu- new fire truck or a tank truck, which we've gotta replace this one. That's where a lot of these monies come from. When it's, and again, it's left pocket, right pocket, but that fund was voted, voted in many years ago. But the money comes in for the ambulance is probably the biggest income they have is from the ambulances and they, they don't, that fund, it, it supports itself, but it doesn't, doesn't support the whole fire department. But it's taxpayers do, uh, and their employees of the town.
I will say, from a department that doesn't have the opportunity to auction anything off, to offset costs, and this is no offense to anybody, but to offset costs of equipment or whatever, I would like to have, we, you know, setting the precedent that being in that position puts you in a better position, I don't necessarily agree with.
The only thing I don't see the difference of is either way, if we offset it, the money for the ambulance, for the, whatever, fire truck repairs, we're offsetting with money that we generated from a sale of a vehicle, or we're gonna offset it with money that we tax people for. So either way, it's money from the taxpayer we're gonna offset it with. So we're gonna offset it now so she has the room for it in her budget, or we're gonna wait and then possibly go over that line or just tax the people more this, for the ten thousand dollars, either way, you're pulling money from the taxpayer.
Go on, tell them over.
I'm saying either way, you're gonna pull money from the taxpayer.
And you would either give more.
Like John said, left pocket, right pocket at this point.
You would either give more back at the end of the year for her reducing her budget, or you would give back in the amount of revenue that I account for as.
And either way, it's the general fund at the end of the year.
Um, and we increased, we increased the repair line, correct? We increased the repair line for, um, for next year, got it, for vehicle repair. Yep. And that's, yeah.
So is it my understanding, when something is auctioned off, you can't go like, like I suggested, go back on all of my accounts. It probably came from one of my accounts, but it can be expended to fix something.
We can earmark, so like, I, I, I'm in the same viewpoint for you. If you had auctioned a truck off and I'm sitting here and you wanted earmark money for a repair, I would have no issue with it. I, I, to me, it's left pocket, right pocket, I'd rather be able to keep the budget down now and not have to overtax next year again.
I think honestly, I think moving forward, like she said, if the highway department auctions off, or we get rid of something, we auctioned off, we gave it ten thousand dollars. I'd love to be able to use that money, how, how do we do that? How, how do we do that when we, I, I mean, I guess it's always, it's always been, I mean, we had a different regime, it was always been, it goes into the general funds, cause we were gonna fix this and this and this. It was never, it was never a laugh.
Yeah, for years, that's what.
Doesn't have to be for a specific purpose and then we can earmark it?
I don't know what the language would have to be.
Right, he would, you would have to come forward, like, she's restricting it for this person, she has an invoice, she has the amount. So you would accept the funds, restrict the first X to go for this and then the rest will go into the, to the general funds.
So I guess here's my other question, she has a budget, she has a budget, and what is left in there for repairs, money wise?
I know my numbers didn't coincide last week, but my numbers were right.
The letters were off, but I just, you just updated yesterday, so what do you have left in your vehicle?
I had forty-nine, I think, hundred, might be a little bit lower than that, and.
Is that seven oh seven?
Yes.
So she has four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars, so we already paid the, we already paid the invoice on it, correct?
On the ambulance fund.
So that should have been already taken out.
That's, that's already been taken out of there.
So it's been paid?
Correct, so that would be the nine thousand going back into her account, so she would have nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen thousand for any unexpected repairs for the rest of the year.
So like.
Well, can't we just ex- can't we just accept that money into the general fund and if something comes up between here and, um, next to March, whatever.
We can't touch a general fund without approval from the voters, I think.
Uh, you, you, no, because you were, you were either gonna accept the full amount and it goes to the general, um, goes losses to fund balance, or you restrict, you can't do it after the fact. So you do it at a public hearing, what you want to do.
Okay, so, and I, and I'm just trying to get it clear in my mind, so if we say we restrict ten thousand dollars, okay, we have to restrict it to a certain thing, but she's already paid that invoice.
Right, she would.
So you can't, we have nothing, we have nothing that we can restrict it to at this point.
You would.
That amount of money back into the stretch money.
You would restrict that mon- money back, so. If you don't earmark that exact amount, then for that exact purpose, then you can't use it for anything other than what you're restricting it for.
Do we have any?
Do you restrict it to maintenance, if it goes back into the maintenance bu- budget, be restricted to maintenance items?
Well, I don't know how you're gonna do it next year now.
And, and maybe why it hasn't been done in the past and maybe why it could or shouldn't be done now, and I, I only have an opinion for that, is there probably has been other funds in people's budget where they could take from. The reason why we did it with the lease is because we went, we got more at auction than they were gonna give us for a trade. They only gave us, what, two grand last year for the cruisers and they're still only gonna give us two grand for anything we traded this year. We got, what, ten at auction or eight? So we used that to offset the cost of the lease, um, so that you are reducing that. Other departments saying, oh, I'm gonna go to auction, but can I go buy this tool? Well, I'm sure maybe the thought, and I'm not gonna speak for Jean, was that, no, you have it in your budget to, you have those funds in your budget. It was a little bit of a different story with using it to offset the lease that we're entering for the next three years.
Right, and, and, and by doing this, we're, by, by restricting, let's, ten thousand dollars, whatever it is, it's really going back into a maintenance fund that could be used to buy, I don't know, oil or whatever, maintenance wise. So you're not really restricting that.
You are, because I've already paid out that money. So if, and I didn't know that this ambulance was gonna happen this way, I didn't know the tanker was gonna happen this way.
Yeah.
So this is kind of a, it's a, it's an unfortunate timing amendment at this point. So if I can take that ten thousand dollars, we'll call it, put it back in, it then offsets, it brings me back to where that ambulance was not the act, not the problem, money wise, and it gets me to where I should be right now.
So example of that would be like if Craig, sorry, if Craig like somehow blew a motor and we had repaired that motor, he ended up selling a vehicle and he wanted to offset that motor repair that he wasn't expecting with money from the vehicle he sold, it's like that.
Okay.
And something wouldn't.
But if, but if he blows a motor and he doesn't have enough money in his budget to pay for the replacement, we need that truck on the line, where does that money come from? I'm just asking, I mean.
That's a whole, I mean, that's a whole different situation though.
But, but not really.
That was mine.
That's why I have a heavy capital reserve. So, I mean, we never, we never used to have a capital reserve, instead of that, instead of trying to build that fund up a few years ago to, you know, offset this.
Yeah, cause we've, we've got another problem coming. We, we know we got a pumping, a pump truck's gotta, at least.
But right now, I don't, I had to take that truck that was gonna cost me over two hundred thousand dollars out of the rotation. So I'm sitting without a truck right now until hopefully the town votes for it.
Hmm.
So, you know, I don't know, you know, if he's got the heavy truck capital reserve, that's great, but I don't.
Hmm.
Maybe I should start one, I don't know. Um, and now I'm, I'm even farther behind everything because of this tanker. So that's certainly not helping. But to justify two hundred thousand dollars on a twenty-something, twenty-one-year-old truck was crazy. And.
Oh, I agree with that, despite last night, I do, I do agree with that.
And I just, I can't battle that part anymore.
Yeah, no.
And I'm not going to. So, but here's the thing, is I've got an ambulance that had problems, we got it fixed, I took it finally to the right place to get it fixed. And now I'm in, I, I'm gonna be in the hole because of the ninety-seven thousand dollars, I think it was, or ninety-six and change. So I'm just looking to offset that amount so that I can get some other things up and running. We still haven't gotten anything from Lake Region Truck to find out what that's gonna cost us to get that engine slowly starting to get fixed. Um, I've got some new tires that need to be put on, I've got some oil changes that need to be done. And I assume you can tell me how much an oil change is gonna cost on a, on an engine, it's gonna be outrageous. And these are the things that I'm trying to get going so that we can get this truck line of the fleet up and running good. And that's where I'm at with it. If I didn't ask you, I wouldn't know. So if you guys are gonna go no, then I've done my job as chief.
Yeah.
And I've asked. And, you know, and going forward, if it ends up being no here, then obviously it will end up being the same. And I think like even like Craig was saying, and then I was talking about, it would benefit to him too. If he was to end up trading in a truck and he went and put a new plow on the new truck he's getting, he could take that money to buy that new plow.
And those funds should go, I've always said that, those funds should go back to the department, I, I think.
I agree they should go back to department as long as they have a specific purpose for them. And I don't think it should just go into a random line, I think if there's a reason to have those funds in that department, then I agree with that.
And so, the funds would have to go to something that is unexpected, it shouldn't go towards something that they've already budgeted for.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Right, and this was an unexpected expense, we didn't know it was gonna be this much, we didn't know it was gonna happen, it had to happen, it's my primary truck. And for whatever reason, they should have never put suspension, that type of suspension on this truck, it's done, it's over with, there's nothing we can do about it. So we're moving forward, I've got it fixed, unexpected ten thousand dollar budget at this point that I, or, that. It is going to go back into that specific line, cause obviously I can't make it go anywhere different, for that exact amount of, and, and I've got all the paperwork for it, I'm sure we have a canceled check for it. So it will be exactly that amount to go back in there. Is it a little bit backwards, maybe?
It was just a timing thing.
Exactly.
So you have forty-seven hundred in that line, can you get five of the forty-seven that's in your budget till January?
March.
No, it would be, oh.
It's till Jan- it's till the end of the year.
It is? So you get how it works.
You're technically in the blind, spending basically last year's budget from January to March.
Ah, okay.
I.
It's gonna be pushing it, it'll probably be, it'll probably be cool. You know, I do have some stuff, for instance, oil changes and, I don't know, John, can you give an estimate for, I don't know off the top of my head, for oil change per engine?
About three hundred.
No.
For one of the big trucks?
Yes.
About three hundred bucks.
So.
And then filters.
Yeah, well, the filters.
And they change all filters, they go through all that stuff.
Yep. And then you've got a pump truck, I guess it's called, that needs about thirty thousand dollars before.
Our engine, our engine three, yes, which was going to be, I'm sorry, my engine one, um, my mistake. Yes, because it, it did have all the work done to it, but unfortunately that was a work that was set in a war article and that's what they fixed.
Yep, and, and what you have is a mechanical and rust problem again on this, on that truck and, uh, and I'll tell you.
And that was all set, and, and so when it was initially set, it was to, to have this stuff done, the war articles done, it went through. It was probably another year and a half to two years before that truck finally rolled out the door to go get fixed. Well, that can happen.
Yep, oh.
And I am looking for an underbody sprayer, um, I did go ahead and look at his to get an idea of what it is. His is probably gonna be a couple thousand dollars, I probably get something right down temporarily for a little while for a couple hundred bucks, bucks and dollars here. But that will be, will be happening. And like I said, I have set up and I've got, and I work on it, we will have, we have a maintenance thing running at this point. Where oil changes, tire rotations, all that stuff's gonna be taken care of. It's gonna be taken care of at, at regular businesses that do that kind of work, moving forward.
And I agree with that, a hundred percent, a hundred percent.
So I would say that your, up for discussion or debate or for you guys is do, do you make an internal policy that says anytime the town has equipment or vehicles that get sold or auctioned, is it the town's policy that it goes, all funds received go right to, you know, the revenue to the general fund? Or if at that time, that department has a specific need that was unexpected, do you allow a certain amount, the full amount, for whatever the situation may be? Because I think what's happened in the past is maybe not the full, like, she's not asking for the full amount, she's just asking for a portion of it. You know, you're making a, um, it's, I don't wanna say deal, but a.
We're making an executive decision here.
You know, you're, you're saying, we'll give you a little, but we're gonna take a little bit too, so we'll work with you. So you can make that decision, or you can make a decision, like I said, that everything goes right to the general fund, or you, or you say that it has to go towards something that was unexpected that, you know, is, is just kinda happened to arise, not like, oh, well, I guess I could go buy this with that because I'm, now I have extra money, no, I don't think that's really appropriate. But in this instance where there was an unexpected repair, this might be acceptable. Where you're gonna get more money from the police selling a car at auction to offset the lease, that's acceptable. If Craig, something happened and timing was right and he needed to replace the motor or, you know, put some of those funds to buy something to help offset the future, that might be acceptable. But I think maybe you guys just wanna take a little time before we have a public hearing to kinda think more about what you wanna do moving forward.
So he's, we, he took a couple police cruisers, one police cruiser or two, to auction not too long ago. Did the money from the sale of the cruisers at auction go to offset the lease payments?
Yes.
And that was not my doing. I only took the, I brought the receipts, here's the money.
Yeah, no, no, I totally understand that, you did great.
I don't, I don't handle this personally, but I, but I've sent one of these chairs for quite a number of years.
It doesn't happen often, I mean, we're not selling things every week, you know, I mean, it doesn't happen often that we have the opportunity to, you know, make.
Well, in my opinion, you can't use the word unexpected strictly, cause if we have that same situation with the police cruisers, that's not unexpected, but it's a special situation that we had to take that money and put it towards the cruiser, cause we could have traded in, got two grand, or we could have sold it, got six grand, and then put that towards the car, either way, you're putting it towards the car. But it's a special situation, not unexpected, cause they expected that to happen, to have to put money towards it.
Right, and that's.
I just don't want the policy to be worded and asked to be put thrown out.
Right, right, because that's what you're coming in for the law and how you accept those unexpected funds, like.
Yeah. I just don't want our policy thrown back on our face.
Well, that's why I think the policy for many years under Jean's control was, it all goes back to the general fund. That way, there was no mistake, it went in the general fund. It didn't go to, there was no excuses, there was no, it went in the general fund. Now how do you get the money out of the general fund when you have an emergency? I don't know even.
The voters, we can barely touch it.
No, but, so, but that was just an understanding and we've, we've lived with that for many years and now it never.
I know Patrick, you, Patrick, you had your hand up.
I'm just looking at it as, just, I'm saying, we need to give, obviously we've got a maintenance problem in our fire department. I mean, we just took a truck out of service and lost our shirt on it, okay? Now it's gonna cost us four or five hundred thousand dollars to replace that. We've got other engines and other ambulances that need maintenance, and, and it's in progress. We need to give the chief the tools to work with. And we got the opportunity here with money that, from a truck that was taken out of service because of a bad frame, we got the opportunity to get that money back to her so she can get the fleet back online. So we're not coming to you, on the taxpayers every year, saying, hey, I need a, a million dollar truck, or I need five hundred thousand dollar truck. If we can hold off those purchases for now three, four, or five years for small money by keeping the maintenance up, I think it's a good deal. I think, I think personally, I think all of that money should go back to her and get the fleet up to standard.
See.
So a couple, I think it was last year, we had an, uh, an unexpected issue with our recording system. And when we were hoping to try to replace that, we didn't have it in our budget to do that. Luckily, we found some money in other, other areas, but in a situation like that, I know it's a smaller amount, but we didn't budget for something like that. If this situation comes up and we, we are able to get funds, unexpected funds into an account for each of the departments, um, that we can use for these unforeseen instances at your approval, I think it's, it's a good, it's a good way to kinda have a capital reserve, if you will, but it's at the sale of, of the equipment, it's unexpected funds and.
So to that, at the county, we have a line that's called unexpected revenue and on, unexpected expenses. And only the commissioners are the ones that have the approval to take that money and put it into a department, cause they weren't expecting to have that expense. I don't know if we have the right to do that here, but I know the county does that, we have a separate line, just strictly, we put five hundred thousand every year. And if we don't touch it, it goes back in, if we do use it, the commissioners are the ones that appropriate it to the right place.
You know, and, and not for nothing, take Jen's office, I don't know, say the, say a big copy machine blows up or just dies right now, we don't have money. I mean, we're, we're, you know, scrimping here with this default budget, and I guess you're right, if these funds could go into a, whatever we call it, fund, that, huh?
Emergency.
Emergency, whatever. I mean, this is a good example, being a default, um, that, you know, it would, I mean.
Which then instead of putting all into the general fund, we could put it all into that line and then dispose it out if we had to.
Right, right. And, and, and again, in, in the chief's situation, um, the monies would be there to take care of this ambulance. And I don't know, say it needs, I mean, I know tires are expensive. Say one of the trucks, I don't know, drives over a bunch of nails, whatever the situation, that's an emergency. You gotta replace the tires. They're not cheap. She might not have that left in her budget, or Craig might not have it left in his budget. Or the police department, doesn't matter. If it was an emergency fund, then we'd be able to do these kind of things to keep our departments, you know, within reason.
I mean, seeing Tom's do a contingency fund that has either been funded through unexpended fund balance year to year, that is up to the discretion of the board.
Yeah. And I wonder if we could allocate money in the budget process to that line. I know we do that in the county.
So that's what the school.
Oh, wait a second. Hold on, what?
Wait, that's what the school does. If you go through your school, you know, unexpended fund balance, unexpended, so if they had IT, for instance, and they didn't end up purchasing that on a computer, so whatever it be, no different than this, being a truck that got sold unexpectedly, okay, and monies come in. They, if you look at your school budget and you look at all those different IT, I don't know, like off the top of my head, a drop like. But there's specific language there that allows for certain monies to go into whatever's left over in that department. So instead of their monies going into the general fund.
They're putting in.
Some of it can, but then they can divert, and it's, there's language, and you should be able to get it from them that says not to exceed.
Because isn't there a percentage?
Not to exceed a certain amount of money. And so therefore, it takes the slush fund wording out of things, because I'm gonna date myself. Years ago, that's what it was all about. We have these, you know, what was classified, and the people that are working and trying to be responsible and, and run what they've been, you know, um, you know, appointed to do, it becomes very, very difficult to do just what is happening here. Where, you know, unforeseen crisis, unforeseen crisis, well, forget about being under default budget. The bottom line is, so if you put ten thousand dollars back into, like for instance, the repair line, and they use eight thousand of that because they were able to finagle, the other two is going into the general fund at the end of the year. All of our monies that are left over in our budget, if I'm not incorrect, go into the general fund. So in a case like this, this year, where it's just been crisis to crisis, it's pretty easy to defend that, look, I mean, in normal years, we may have something else, but because we were going back a year before, and really were working off of.
Two years ago.
And cost of living has gone astronomical, so everything's gone up one fifth, let's say. So we're behind one fifth. And now we have breakdowns and all this other repair that we're trying to rub, you know, if they qualified the expression, and, and at the end of the day, this year, that's very defendable, but I think you should look at the way the school does it, and it's not to exceed. And then, um, and then the rest of the money goes into the general fund. Because I think it's a safeguard. I think PD is consistently by a department, um, to main, the main, um, expense departments, if you will, have consistently, you know, anticipate, and then things don't happen. But it's kind of a little different, because it has a special revenue fund, and that fund was designed for, um, and it's been expanded. And that's the only thing with that department, I think, that you probably have to be a little careful with, with what you design a special revenue fund for. Because everyone looks at, what was the special revenue, I mean, Comcast.
Does it have to be, do you have to design one for each department? Can't you design one?
You could, and it would just be called a contingency fund.
Okay.
But it would be see how you wanna fund it. Do you wanna fund it through taxation, or do you wanna fund it through unexpended fund balance at the end of the year? Currently, we, um, yeah. So those are decisions that I don't think it's too late for you to probably bring forward and do.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the warrant articles, separate warrant articles haven't been, um, you know, finalized, but it is an option.
I would, I would really retail, I know what other communities, how they do this, 'cause I know there's language, and it, and again, I'll defer to the school. I know the school, if you look at the, you know, they, every one of those big hitter departments have, um, e- excessive funds from the department, a certain portion can go into that fund for.
If it's a fund, doesn't the voters have to approve taking money out of it? But if it's a built-in line item, like at the county, then the commission has say over transferring that money.
So if you created a warrant, a capital reserve fund, would the board's all of the agents to expend?
Okay.
All of the voters would be voting on is what goes into that amount each year.
Right. Okay, so then we can have the authorization to expect throughout the year. Okay, okay.
Yes, you would have. Set it up so that the board, the board, just like all our other ones are, the board is the agency to expend.
Okay. Okay.
I think it goes not to exceed, you know, like because monies still need to go into the general fund.
Yeah.
If you don't use it, it's supposed to go back into the general fund to reduce taxation. But I mean, the school platform is much different, and, um, there is specific language.
So, with all that being said, um, how do you wanna proceed? I mean, we don't want her, um, we don't want her maintenance line to, um, overexpend, which is what this is.
It may, I mean, she still has forty-seven hundred in there.
Right.
I'm looking at two, two vehicles.
It really, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's an accounting thing. It doesn't matter whether it did it, moved this, it moved it today or moved it in three weeks or four weeks. At the end of the year, all that matters is you made the move by the end of the year, um, for the audit.
Alright. So I guess, I guess my question is, is that, um, whatever the figure is, the twenty-five. Um, if we're able to, do we have to have voter approval to set up a contingency?
You would have to do that for your warrant articles in twenty-five.
You would. So it really doesn't affect this at all. This is, this is now.
Creating a contingency fund is just an idea that was thrown out there to help all of the departments with unexpected, um, uh, unexpected expenses that are restored the year.
So it's all finding good that we, we wanna do this, but then we've got a, we've got to fund it.
If that's something that the board wants to do moving forward is to create a contingency fund.
Okay, so we don't have to put monies into, we make, we put a dollar into it, right? Line item. You put a.
Uh, and then, so if you wanted to create a capital reserve contingency fund, so you would have to decide how you want to fund it.
Yeah.
Do you wanna fund it through pure taxation, or do you wanna fund it year to year by unexpended fund balance? So what would go on the article was, you know, the creation of this capital reserve funded through unexpended fund balance, no, no funds to come through taxation, and whether you're gonna put fifty thousand this year, a hundred thousand. Each year you would need to know how much, through my recommendation, how much you could put into these funds, which is one of the things we're talking about later, so.
And is that something that's gonna have to be voted on every year? What amount goes into it?
Um, so you put forward what you want to go forward into it, and then, yes, the voters vote that.
Is that a separate warrant article? Or would that become part?
All the capital reserves, all the capital reserves are separate warrant articles, correct.
And that's the problem, is they're not gonna, they're gonna see the dollar amount, they're not gonna read where it comes from, and they're gonna vote it down when it doesn't affect the tax rate at all.
That's.
I mean, if, if you were funding it through un- unexpected, or unexpected fun, un- 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 unexpended fund balance, it'd say, um, no funds to come through taxation.
Right, unexpended. Yep.
If you were funding it through taxation, it would say, or.
You'd have to fund it. Well, my feeling is to get it to pass, you would want it.
You have to fund it if you're on this, you have to.
Yeah, yeah.
And each year you can, you know, as the, you know, there may be, you're, the department's having a penalty in their budget, and they're finding they don't need to expend from it. And so maybe one year you're putting fifty thousand, maybe one year you're putting twenty-five or a hundred, and maybe some years you're not funding it, 'cause you've got enough in there that, you know, um, you've kept a good enough cushion that you're comfortable with.
I think there has to be, um, some specific, yeah, there's gonna have to be some specific language. And, and again, I'm not, you know, department heads, it's, what's that saying? Wants versus needs, alright? And I don't know, say the police department want all new name tags, and the highway department wants new T-shirts. Yeah, I, I'm not trying to be smart, I'm just trying to, you know, and, and the fire department wants.
You're getting in trouble.
Right, oh, well, I, I can get myself in trouble. But what I'm saying is there has to be some specific kind of things, so that.
Right, I think too, how do you manage? How do you say, well, you get five dollars and you get two hundred thousand, and then, and then you're gonna, and I think you've come into situations where, oh, well, they got this and I got this.
Right, right. Yeah, that, that's what.
But that's ultimately why it comes to us. Like, we are the only ones that can be thrown out by voters, so. That's if the voters don't like how we expend the fund, they throw us out.
Yeah. Alright.
Who would have thought, uh, the contingency fund or, uh, later.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, but what about?
So let's go back to this, um.
The immediate problem.
The immediate problem. Let's go back to the immediate problem. We get off on.
Next year's problem.
Yeah, really. Alright.
We got more coming, but make one thing perfectly clear. The fire chief inherited these problems. She didn't create them.
Oh.
There's been a maintenance, a lack of maintenance in that building for quite some time.
Yep, and now we're paying for it.
Now, now we're paying.
Now we're paying for it.
So you want consensus on what we're thinking?
I would like to see her get the money that she asked for, that was spent on repairs for the ambulance, to hopefully help maintain, um, the repairs that she's gonna need till the end of the year.
Is that a motion?
Well.
If you want it to be, it can be absolutely.
I'll second that motion.
Does it have to be in public or not in public? Can we do it now?
We will, so.
What? Oh, now we can't do that?
The background, so, yeah, so we'll, we'll hold a public hearing.
Yeah, okay.
But I will set up the language in the public hearing that says, we're accepting the twenty-five or six fifty, with the first X to be restricted to go towards the fire department, real repair and maintenance, and then the rest will go to the general fund. So that's my guidance that I need from you, if that's the direction you wanna do.
But also is that money that's going to the fire department, if she doesn't spend it, it comes back into the general fund, right?
Uh, no, no, no. That's.
You're restricting this just to go towards the repair of the ambulance.
You're just paying that bill, is what.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's, it's accounting thing. All they're gonna do is, they're gonna say, okay, she paid this ambulance bill with this money, now she has this amount of money in her maintenance. If she does not spend all that maintenance money, yes, that will, at the end of the year, come back to the general fund.
Yeah, that's what I meant. That's what I meant.
Right, so, this is just to offset that invoice for that repair only. And that's why you hold a public hearing, restricting that for that, so that she can be like, oh, I've got, you know, ten thousand dollars to go buy a new battery that I did budget for. So that's just, you're being clear that this is restricted for X purpose only.
Mm-hmm. We're paying that bill only, basically.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Alright.
And I can get you a number right now if you'd like.
I don't need it now. I think we'll get it later.
No. No, 'cause we'll have to have it for the public hearing. So basically what, I guess this consensus is, do you want to, um, um, make those money, pay that bill through this, the sale of this? If so, we have to have a, we have to schedule a public hearing to do that.
We still have to hold a public hearing regardless.
Uh, to accept the money, but then at the same time.
Where do you want the money to go? And how do we use it?
Right. So in other words, do you, what I'm proposing is that we hold a public hearing to accept the twenty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. And at the same time, we would then take, I'll just say nine thousand, whatever, whatever the bill, the, the costs for the repair of that ambulance, which was unexpected. And obviously, we can't be without an ambulance, of, I'll just say nine thousand dollars, whatever that bill is, comes from this, and we refund that back to the fire station, fire department.
Is that a motion?
No, we can't, I guess, I guess we can't really make a motion. It's.
I know, I know.
I mean, you, you can make a motion.
Well, Sharon made the motion.
Or consensus.
And I seconded.
Alright.
So if you're all in favor of however that came out, to do that, then we vote in favor of that, or against it.
Is that a consensus of the other three, Jane?
All in favor.
All in favor.
Well, I'd like to have you read that motion back to me, 'cause I didn't really understand what she said. Uh, so if you could read it back to me, and then I'll know what I'm voting on.
So you're having a consensus that you're going to hold a public hearing at your next meeting to accept the un- unanticipated revenue from the sale of the tanker in the amount of twenty-five thousand, six fifty, and we're going to restrict, did you have that exact amount?
I'm gonna give.
It's, we're gonna restrict around nine thousand dollars, whatever that exact figure is, for the repair of that.
Nine thousand, three hundred, sixty-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Will be restricted so that she can fix the ambulance, and then what's left over, do the math.
Comes back to the general fund.
To offset.
Taxes.
I'll, I'll go along with that.
And we'll hold a public hearing, talk about all of this again at your next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, alright. Good.
So everybody's all in favor?
Yes, yeah, we're all in favor of doing that. Okay? Okay. Think I need a couple coffee. Um, our next item is, um, what? Oh, is review of capital outlay for twenty-twenty-five.
So, yeah, so you have this highlighted, um, paper in front of you.
Yeah. Yeah.
So as I, I had given you guys these numbers last meeting, and what we have is, so we have four hundred thousand of unex- unex- unexpended fund balance left over from twenty-three, uh, left, um, yes.
So confusing.
This is our.
So we've already put, um, money towards offsetting the tax rate, and it still gives us the four hundred. So typically, we've only used the fund balance to fund the accrued liability in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. So we have a little extra this year to fund other things. So I had brought to you what you, so essentially, I had brought to you, you could either fund fully from the unexpended fun, unexpect, unexp- un- un- unexpended fund balance, those highlighted areas. You could create completely new capital reserves, funding, funded by the unexpended fund balance. So all of the, essentially, all the funds that are highlighted would say funded through unexpended fund balance, zero money to be raised through taxation. So what you would really only be raising through taxation was, was the municipal facilities and the highway reconstruction. So before, you were gonna raise through taxation, one million, six hundred and fifty. Now, minus the four hundred, you're only gonna, um, fund by taxation, one million, two hundred and fifty.
So what you're looking for is, is our approval to fund those highlighted, um, highlighted?
Right, and so coming through your discussions, we had, um, I redid the numbers, and at that point, we were talking, we had an extra thirty thousand, and we were gonna put thirty thousand into the, um, highways, heavy duty equipment. I actually have fifty, so that would increase there sixty thousand to one-ten. And then I added, um, just another, and I was just kinda rounding up numbers, um, five thousand into the property revaluation, and I added seventy-five hundred into the info check. There was no really primary reasoning except for adding more.
Well, the, actually, the property revale is, is huge, because that failed, and so now we're behind, we're behind the eight ball.
To fix that, and then the other reason why I added.
And the IT is obviously, we're looking at, um.
IT is always changing. We're, we're gonna need to replace some of our important software for AP and payroll that is very costly. Um, we're not gonna, we're gonna have to replace it in the future, because the current person we are going with now, um, was bought out. They're trying to push us to go to their new platform, and they're new, but I'm waiting for them and other municipalities to work with them, get the kinks out. So whether we decide to go with them or another software, will be something that does come in the future that we should plan for.
Mm-hmm.
Um, my other thought process for adding into the heavy equipment line was, if you recall from our last meeting, Building and Grounds had, has talked for a number of meetings that their truck is, you know, coming into life, and that they would need a replacement. And looking at what, you know, he had looked at for a, a new one between Craig and Patrick and John, I think there was a discussion, I don't know if you guys can, wanna talk about your thought process with removing, um, your proposal for the truck. I think Craig has a truck that.
Yeah, I'll talk about it. So we've discussed the thirty thousand dollars going into the heavy equipment fund. Patrick needs a truck. We've discussed the thirty thousand dollars going into the heavy equipment fund, um, Patrick needs a truck, so we were having, we were having a discussion, John stopped by the office last week, uh, Sonny was with him, he had some personal business to talk about, Patrick came to come in, and he was proposing, he told Johnny he had another quote for a new truck, so, a, a brand-new pickup, to have a pickup, it's expensive, and I was, so, I, I could, I kinda read the room, and I could kinda tell that, um, I, so I basically said I have a solution to this problem, so I, the fire department right now is a two thousand fifteen, um, one-ton pickup, it's got a V plow on it, um, it's got seventy-five thousand miles on it, Patrick has actually driven this truck, um, it's got a radio in it, it's got, it's, it's ready to go, the problem is, it's two thousand fifteen, and, you know, the truck's, it's, it's not tired, but, you know, it carries a sander, it's ten years old, I think it would be a perfect truck for Patrick, I could, I could take that thirty thousand dollars, we give that, that, that truck to Patrick, take that thirty thousand dollars, I could put that to a replacement truck, and I could take money, monies out of my heavy equipment capital reserve, and maybe, you know, we could, it would, yeah, it would be, it would be very, not much, not, not much expenditure for the taxes, so Patrick could get a truck, we could upgrade, 'cause we're gonna have to upgrade at some point anyway, um, I think everybody thought it was a pretty good idea, so.
I did.
You know, I mean, and then, and then I won't be taking, I won't be taking so much out of my capital reserve, I mean, I'm planning on, um, my least, my least purchase item line is down, and getting that, getting the new truck from the grain is gonna help that, so, what I'd kinda like to do is maybe, maybe next year, I'll, um, replace one of the five fifties with a lease purchase item next budget season, and then I'll have, I'll still have enough money in my capital reserve, but the next year, we wanna upgrade the loader, and then, I can, I can retire or get done knowing that these guys will be in a really good spot with the equipment, you know, but I think, but I think that's a perfect, that's got, that truck's got four or five years left in it, if it's just used for Patrick.
And he doesn't need the sander, or you'd put the sander on, no?
He's got, he'll have a flatbed.
Yeah, oh, oh, that one's.
Has already got a flatbed, it doesn't dump, but, you know, if we get, if we replace it, I'll get a flatbed that will dump, it's just, it really gonna be corrupt, but I mean, he'll have a flatbed, it'll have a plow, it'll have four-wheel drive, it's been maintained, um, but like I said, it's starting to get to the point where putting a sander on it with,
Sure, it's pushing it, sure.
Three tons of sand in it, but it's, it's just getting to the point where, you know, those, those days are numbered for the truck, so we, I think it would help everybody out, and it would be a really cost-effective way to upgrade him and us, and make everybody happy, so, that's my solution.
Yes, Travis?
Can I just hear Patrick's thoughts on it real quick, can I just hear your thoughts on it real quick?
Oh, I, I drove the truck, years ago, I drove the truck, um, when I did the plow downtown, uh, I re-grew, I drove it again, uh, last week to test it out, just to make sure I'm perfectly happy, that truck will last us two to three years easy, uh, we don't put a lot of miles on, but we, we put some.
You still have to have one, right?
Yeah, and, uh, our biggest trip is either to the beach every day to check that out the price of the day, or Home Depot, or whatever may turn, uh, but we need something we can get around town with, especially on bad weather, uh, we're out at three, four, when DPW goes out, we're out, so, um, uh, I do not have a problem with that, and just giving you an update on our truck, um, we're starting to now have electrical problems with it, uh, the computer is now, the dash computer is going in and out every once in a while, last week, we had a window all of a sudden just go down, so we had that taped off, we haven't done a repair, the only thing that I've done is scheduled this Friday is to put a set of tires on the back, so this whole process can go through, that if we do get a snowstorm, I can get around town, because the tires on the back are bad.
I wouldn't.
One, one more advantage to this is Patrick will now have a truck, not a two-wheel-drive truck, he'll have a truck, four-wheel-drive, with a plow, he can actually assist us with some of the, you know, some of the, I mean, and, and no offense, the PD is just an extreme amount of work to plow that PD, it's like, ten times what we thought it was gonna be, so, you know, that, so that pickup downtown that we have now, does the PD, does all, does all the parking lots, does the little side roads, I mean, Patrick would be able to have a plow, or him and Kyle down here, they could, you know, they could play around, hauling them all, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't be someone that's a gun, you know what I'm saying?
I don't have a problem with that, I'm, you know.
I'll take Patrick's whole truck to the.
Oh, you'll take it to auction? Okay, here we go, we're going to auction.
Listen, it brings back money.
Can we use those funds for the new truck?
Uh, yeah, 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 see? See, here we go, alright. Um, I don't have a problem with that, I think that.
That one's good, are you good with how I have allotted the money, and that's how these will all breed, or did you wanna create other new?
Yes. Yep. No, no, go ahead, uh, Dawn?
Uh.
Well, we'll have to, um.
You could, I mean, if you want to create that account, you could, I'll have to do all the numbers now, and what you want to take funds away from that?
No, I would, can't you create it and just put a buck? At this point.
But then we can't put money into it until the following year.
Right.
But, you mean some of this twenty-five?
No, no, so like.
Oh, for this, oh, oh, got it.
With the fund, you have to still allocate to begin the year, how much money you want to put.
Well, no, because what's gonna happen is, we can put money into it, if we, if we sell Patrick's truck, can't we put that, those funds?
It depends how you want to fund.
What's this, we, you gonna go to the auction?
I'll go to the, I'll go to the auction.
I think, I think you need more time to think about the contingency, and I need to get you some more answers.
Yeah, 'cause I don't know if we can allocate funds into a fund in the middle of the year like that.
Alright.
No, he has to be established.
Yeah.
But I do have a question.
What's that?
For guys, um, capital, so if the furnace breaks or blows apart in the town hall, what do we do, where do those monies come from? Do we have a building and?
No, it would have to come from the municipal facilities, wouldn't it?
It would, A, probably either be fixed by insurance, or it would come through the municipal facilities, capital reserve.
Because I believe that's what we did, the roof on the, um, fire station.
Okay, so there's only a roll into a topic that I sat into last night with the budget committee, and that was, the fire department has serious, um, structural issues that are presenting itself more and more, so somewhere, somehow, and I know we're trying to pass budgets, but still responsibility to look at keeping these buildings repaired or, or working order, so, how does this year close out without addressing some monies, what these, uh, capital fund for the roof or?
Oh, the roof, oh, you mean the trusses, wow, um.
Wouldn't that fall under the municipal fund?
You weren't here last night when Ron Mitchell made a presentation of his observation.
I was on Zoom. Yeah, Ron Mitchell basically, yeah, Ron Mitchell visited the fire station earlier this week, I guess, whatever, and, um, you know, basically hit on the fact last night during the meeting, that there's some structural issues that you can kinda see just with the cracking and the whatever, um, and if you really look, the building's shifting, for lack of knowing what else to call it, and Ron is saying that we've got trusses that are, we're not, um, we're not up to, uh, snuff, and, and we've got some issues going on there, and, you know, right off the bat, it's, well, you need to hire an engineer to look at that, um, it's gonna have to be a structural engineer, um, have no idea what those, what the cost of a structural engineer even is at this point, um, or is it something that we, um, I don't know, construction management company, something, yeah, we've got some issues with that building, um, I know we just, didn't we just approve some money to do doors and stuff, correct?
Yeah, seven thousand and, to get the doors to be able to close properly.
Yeah. Right, and, and, and again, as soon as I hear that, I'm going, okay, then we put all this money into these doors closing, and, yeah, yeah, I'm not sure.
Well, so, and Patrick can kind of attest to this, every couple of months, I have to have him come down and realign the entrance doors.
Oh, sure, yeah, because it's just shifting, it's shifting, yeah, and, you know, and then we just put money into the, um, bathroom kinda stuff, and, yeah, I don't know, I guess we've really got to have that discussion, what's the best route to go?
Well, I mean, you're in budget session, and obviously, there's some structural issues going on that are a little more than tweaking a door, something like that, so.
Oh, I know. Oh, definitely, yeah. And, and the problem is, we don't know, you know, you gotta, you've gotta get a handle on what it's gonna cost to even repair it, okay, and.
You have to at least set up a budget here, if you don't have that.
Well, no, if, if we were to hire an engineering company to look at that, it would have, the funds would have to come out of the municipal facilities account, alright, and obviously. Huh?
Which didn't get funded.
Which didn't get funded, okay, so, yeah, I mean, we've gotta get an engineer, and I haven't hired, I haven't done structural, dealt with structural engineers for a while, so I don't even.
We could do Bonapage and Stone.
Do what?
We could have them, Bonapage and Stone come down and take a look at what their, uh, architect and engineers they have on staff.
Uh, they hire, they sub out that, right, they sub that up.
We, we could get a cost in the.
I think that's all non-public board, you know, figure out, like, the particulars.
Yeah, I'm, yeah.
That kinda stuff, I just wanted to bring forward that it was brought out last night in public, and so therefore, something needs to move forward, and if that means bridging the gap and putting a capital building, repair specifically for the fire department, separated, separate from this kinda of the buildings, I mean, 'cause that one isn't gonna be a ten thousand dollar budget, we all know, so better to start now and have everybody acknowledge it, whether it's small, and then be able to add to it.
What is in that municipal facilities account now, just roughly, I don't need to know exact?
Um, it's less than six.
Okay, and you're proposing to add?
A five.
Five, and last year, that did not pass, okay, so.
So less than, less than six thousand or six hundred?
No, six hundred.
Okay, right, well, you know.
We have enough, no, we have, no, we have enough to deal with engineering, if we, 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 yeah, we've gotta put an RFP out, you gotta put an RFP.
I get that, but I guess, do you want that building going under this particular category, or do you wanna isolate it because it's definitely going to be a budget kinda?
Well, we can i- isolate, but what do we put into it for a figure, we have no idea.
Hundred thousand dollars.
I mean, I don't know.
I just don't like isolating it, only because of the fact that they're gonna try and still vote down the other funds, when we need to have the money in there for the town, for the municipal facilities, if they wants to take care of the fire department, put the money in the facility fund and let us take care of it.
And if not, and that building goes, that will, will deplete this fund.
Hopefully, the insurance. No, hopefully, the insurance company, hopefully, the insurance company will cover.
It's gonna happen. I just don't like making too many special funds directed towards one department, 'cause then you got the people that'll vote for one fund for that department, and then try and jam the rest departments down our throats.
I think you have to.
If they don't like the way we spend things, like I said, they can vote us out.
And I think the other issue is, is that we are one, even though we, we have different departments, we're all on one, you know, all these buildings are under one.
I'm not just saying. If push comes to shove, and you need to do some major repairs, you are going to deplete a very large portion of what you have.
And, 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 and town hall will be put on the back burner even more and more and more.
I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Yeah, yeah, no, we, we have to discuss.
Let's get the five hundred fast.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, it's brutal, you're right.
You gotta have money to fix them.
It is, it's, yeah, and what, what the taxpayers don't understand is, is we have many buildings, so, and they're all, and they're all, and.
If you don't keep up with it, it costs you more money down the road.
Totally.
Look at the maintenance, it's just, it's everything.
Yep. So, okay. Fire department requests, request for ARPA funds, new pagers. Really, I think we've spent, we've spent, listen.
Last hour just spent on fire department.
It's the fire, fire department show today.
So, as I know, we've been discussing, we do still have the ARPA unaccounted, uh, unaccounted balance to, to designate before the end of the year, but then I gave you,
Yep.
the tally of what we were starting with, and it's in your packets, um, you've already agreed, um, to the police department getting a cruiser, um, and the repeater, um, I threw in there the balance that you do approve their request for the replacement of their, I'm sorry, pagers, not radios, um, that is still what we're left with at the, at the end, we still have seventy-six.
And where are we with the generator for this building?
That's still up for consideration, that was one of, Patrick's truck replacement was one of my suggestions, fixing, doing something on the mill was my other suggestion, and the generator was also my other suggestion, and whatever you guys have come up with.
Well, after Ron's, after Ron's little, after Ron's little speech last night, okay, I, I would push for a generator for the mill, because if the, if the fire department blows over, they'll need someplace to go, so it will be the mill.
Yeah, so.
Yeah. Here we go, we've moved generators before, oh, God.
I mean, certainly, you don't have to approve her request for the pagers, you may, or, you know, that's a, your option, it's, it's, it was a request, I mean, it was an ask, um.
So how much do we have a cost for the generator?
So, when Patrick reached out, we got quotes, we got, the lowest quote was eighty-six thousand, the highest quote was one-ten.
And I would figure one-thirty to one-forty now, 'cause those quotes are old, and the prices are.
So even if we don't.
I priced one for my own.
We wouldn't even have nothing.
Two years ago, and I'm paying two, three thousand dollars more now this year to have it installed.
So, Deb, I have a question, um, about the high school, so there was an incident the other day when school started at the middle school, and they transported all the children from the middle school to the high school, is that, can you have that capacity of people in that building?
There's an emergency tran- change, yes, I mean, I don't know where they ended up putting them, they probably set them between cafeteria, the gym.
Yeah, and.
They needed to have them out of there, for one, I guess there was an electrical issue, it was swirling through the wires or something, that's what I heard, and then the sprinkler system was leaking water, so that wasn't, so that we could, they couldn't get the alarm system set properly.
Right.
So they brought them over there till they got everything situated, and I think it was maybe about an hour, and they moved back.
Yeah, Anthony said about nine-thirty, 'cause I was just, I look at the numbers of the enrollment in the school, and I'm like, that's almost, with that, with staff, that's about nine hundred people.
Right, but you're looking at, so place of assembly is per room, so this room is one, that one's another one, so you've got, and I don't remember what the places of assemblies are in, in, in the things, I have to look at them all, but, um, you know, if they don't have the bleachers out, they're the chairs out, and they're just standing room, it can easily hold that, between them and the cafeteria.
Okay, I don't, yeah, I'm kinda leaning towards doing what we need to do to put a generator in this building, I think anything that helps us move forward, especially in an emergency management.
We certainly would bring the kids here.
No, I understand that, but it's just another.
No, but we might, we might have to bring the fire department here.
It's just another, it's just another measure.
Somebody should ask the school, how is it that they take EOC money and haven't had the generators? They get money encompasses from the government, and the, all three of our school buildings are listed as EOCs.
Just the one.
Just one?
Just high school, it's not an EOC, I'm sorry, it is a, it's a shelter.
Okay, because the high school's just getting a generator, it had one, but it didn't run for five years, so it really wasn't much good to them.
And the other schools do not have them.
No, but their office building has one.
But the SAU, the SAU has one.
SAU has one.
That's your thirty-three million dollar school budget, yeah.
So.
Someone should ask.
Um, I'll get, I'll get, um, um, thrown under the bus again, alright, but, um, I would prefer, I'm sorry, uh, if we need, I would prefer to see the monies go towards, um, the generator, and get the generator replaced versus the pages at this point. and get the generator replaced versus the pagers at this point. If it comes out that there's still funds, I don't have a problem with the pagers. But, um, and I'm not trying to throw anybody, I, I would prefer to see a generator in front of the pagers. That would be my two cents worth at the moment.
No, and I, I get it. I saw that there was money out there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And our pagers are no longer made, so they're no longer serviced.
Sure.
And this is what lets us know that we have a call.
And I feel, I'd say, I feel more comfortable paying for the pages of operating budget than trying to pay for a generator of an operating budget.
I have a question. Uh, is there a time aligned that these ones have to be used?
They have to be used by twenty-twenty-six. I just have to have a commitment by the end.
We have to commit, we have to commit.
You need to invoice and assign P O. And the board's basically blessing on.
At the end of this year?
At the end of this year.
Okay.
So, we gotta get on it.
Yeah, when I was out there pricing that out, I got anywhere from a ten to a twelve month lead time. Now, I don't know if that's reduced or not, but, uh, it's not just a, you're not replacing, you're actually installing.
Right.
So it's pads, tanks, everything has to be, has to be done, so.
Do we already have propane here?
No.
We don't? Okay, all right. So there's a lot of work to do before the end of the year to get confirmed contracts.
I'll start working on it.
Uh, is everyone fine with that? I mean, I'm sitting here saying we need a generator.
I don't know a thing about propane.
No, that's not what I mean. I mean, um.
That's why Ron's, he's gonna follow the generator.
The generator.
Yeah, I'm all for that. Yeah, I think that's important.
What's next? Yeah, do we need a motion for that?
We could do a motion, um, well, we don't have, um.
We don't have the exact number either.
No.
So I guess we've got our, yeah. The, the, I guess, the consensus, sorry for twenty-dollar, consensus is to, um, get the generator for the mill out of the ARPA funds. And, and it would.
The leftover bounds of the ARPA funds.
Right.
Are the purpose of the certain number feature.
Right, that's correct. And once we know the exact numbers, then we'll do an official motion for that. Okay? Um, any other old business?
Um, yes, I'm gonna have Patrick come forward. He has an update on the fire department's bathroom.
Oh, that's these pretty colored pictures.
Yes, providing you with pictures of his, kind of, his beautiful works after the full repair. And the top three pictures that you have in color of, be very squirrely, very, clearly you could tell why they had issues with this, this.
Uh, we did, after your approval, we did have Raul come in. Uh, they removed the shower where they had to take the shower, dismantle it, uh, it was destroyed. Uh, jackhammered the floor, dug it out, and you can see the mix match in one of the pictures of what plumbing looked like underneath. That was the reason why we had so many problems. So the bottom picture is the cleaned up, uh, that they did. Um, we, uh, they did that. They put the sand back, put the floor back, installed, temporarily installed the shower. Then Kyle and I, uh, went and got the materials and the tools that we needed. Uh, and then I put Kyle to work. Uh, and you can see on the second page, the end results. We're able to get tile that matches. Uh, we're able to, um, put everything back. Shower's operating, sewer's operating fine. I'd like to commend Kyle for the nice job that he did. There was a one-person job in there, cause you can only get one person in the shower.
There's no, so much wrong. No.
But he did a nice job.
I wonder if he worked the moonlights.
And a couple of other updates. The annual sprinkler inspection on this building was done here two weeks ago. We passed. The only thing we had to change out was a couple of gauges that were old. Uh, that was done. Uh, the second floor plumbing issue that you also approved, that has been done. The only project that I have out there is the trees on Penn Stock Garden. Uh, and they're scheduled in the week after Thanksgiving. And we're in pretty good shape for the winter.
Good, good.
Um, Craig has an update on his truck.
Oh, the truck? The truck?
He has some good news, and it's not gonna cost you any money.
Yeah, nothing at all costs money.
Yeah, twenty percent. Yeah, but it's not gonna, it's not gonna cost taxpayers any money. We're gonna be all right. But anyway, so we got an email this morning. Our truck is ready down at Fairfield, so hopefully tomorrow, we're gonna go pick that up. So the grant, you know, the bull's wagon diesel.
So are you gonna drive it around town to show it off?
Uh, no, the first thing I'm gonna do is call the Laconia Dolly's son. I'm gonna have, come have them take a picture of it.
Nice.
And we're gonna do a little write-up, hopefully, if you're hearing me, Laconia Dolly's son. Um, yeah, we're gonna have them, you know, do a little write-up and say that this, where, where this truck came from and it was.
Where the money came from.
Where the money.
Where the money came from, please.
No, no, seriously, like, so we don't, when we drive the truck down the road, we don't have everybody's, any way to get that money, so.
Yep.
No, it was, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of effort, and it's been, it's.
God, it's been two years, hasn't it been?
Year and a half, something like that, yeah.
You can get a bumper sticker that says grant funded.
There we go, this is a good idea.
I get a friend with a cricket makes all kinds of stickers.
I mean, Brian worked really hard on this, and it's just, it's, it's a great benefit to the town. Two hundred fifty thousand dollar truck. We're only paying for twenty percent of it, so, um, it's, it's great. It just, you know, brings our, you know, like I said, if we can somehow get, you know, get Patrick that pickup and cooperate that pickup, and then another piece of, we, we're really starting to, you know, be in good shape.
Well, well, that's some positive news.
No, it is. I mean, it is. It's just, but it's, it takes years.
Yep.
It's, it's, it's baby steps, you know, it's, it really does take years. Cause I can honestly remember some of the, some of the shoes I used to be in. You know, I mean, it, it takes time. It's a lot of work and it takes time.
It does.
It will happen if you just keep at it, you know?
Persistence.
So, yeah, so it's, it's gonna be quite a rig. You guys should come up and see it.
We'll see it drive by.
Yep.
All right.
Cause usually it's out in the middle of the night.
Oh, okay. Other old business? Any other, any else?
One final thing. Um, so, as you know, um, I had come before you because we needed to put out our, um, I T to, um, our I T contract is ending at the end of the year, and we needed to put an R F P out. So, um, the R F P has been released. Um, having never done an R F P for I T services, we haven't changed our I T services for many, many years. I underestimated the time needed for companies to respond. Um, there is, you know, there's no one in town, including myself, first enough in our I T to assist me in answering the specific questions. It's going to require, a lot of the companies have asked to come do site visits. Um, I'm not an expert in I T at all in answering the questions. And the questions that I get asked, I have to ask our I T. Our I T has to help me answer some. I've also gotten some help or offer of assistance from people to assist me in reviewing the R F Ps, reviewing the, um, the bids once they come in. Um, so at this point, having underestimated the time it took, I'm asking that we extend the, the process a month or two. It's not really, it's not hurting us. We're just gonna remain status quo with C C S as now. You need to be paying them or someone else. I want the town, I don't want the town to just settle. I want the town to be getting the best services, the coverage and protection possible. And I think extending is more beneficial to all of us, not to rush the process.
So, how do you know what to put in the budget?
I'm going with what it is now for, um, with our current provider.
Mm-hmm.
And if the numbers come in before we move forward, that would be your decision if they come in. I mean, if they come in lower, you've just over budgeted a little bit. But if they come in higher, um, I mean, how much more are you going to, you know, want to accept a company that is higher than what you're already paying?
I find it hard to believe that our number's gonna come in lower. Uh, that's only, I'm thinking, just with.
I find it hard to believe too.
So, um, I guess, would it behoove you to maybe, I don't know, call a few towns that are similar size? And just kind of get an idea so that we can?
So we put, I believe, their contract was one-sixteen. I put that number in. I think you're probably gonna be in the one-twenty-five to one-thirty range.
Yep.
That's your probably final number, even some feedback that I've gotten from people who have already reached out. They are already telling me that there's probably gonna be more than that anyway, so.
So why do you keep the one-sixteen and not increase it to more than that?
I mean, you can if you want to. I just don't wanna over budget the budget if it's not necessary, cause I don't know at the end, who's gonna come out as the lowest bidder and still be the better option.
Well, I guess my two cents worth is what's gone down in this world in the last inflation. And, yeah, I'm just concerned that you might not.
And you still have time, you still probably have until the end of December to still lay your budget numbers. And, um, this is, this is gonna give us a little bit.
I'd, I'd kind of look at that a little bit, because I find it hard to believe that it's gonna come in lower maybe than what we're paying now to do what's gotta be done.
Well, especially if you have to buy, if you're expecting the new provider to replace all of the.
Everything, yeah.
Yeah, servers and everything else. I mean, you're looking, you're looking at not just using what we have and then having, but then somebody who's going to, this, this, I'm gonna speak up and say this I T scenario has not been looked at. No offense, you, you inherited it, but it has not, um, been looked at in a way that it should've. I mean, it's, I T is a whole core here. I mean, it's what we work off. If it goes down, we're in trouble. And so when you start looking at bringing in new companies, are they gonna warranty our computers that we have now? And.
Or are they replacing them all, or what are they doing?
And if they're forced to replace everything, that's huge money. So it's how you, how do you go about this whole process? And the problem we haven't, and I'll, I'll be outspoken inside, the problem that we haven't done anything is because in some respects, we've been held hostage with this whole, um, it's gonna be expensive, you know? And as long as we stay at this status quo, the problem is, are, are we doing what's right? I mean, are we providing?
Now, you had talked about the software too, um, the software for, um, payroll software. You're looking at, you know, um, possibly changing that to a different.
Yeah, probably the next year or two, the town will probably have to make those changes. But, I mean, those would have to come in, you'd have to find your capers or whatever. Those would definitely be thirty, forty, fifty. So, I mean, I've seen towns seventy-five thousand for one program, so, yeah.
Wow, huh? Wow.
So I'm, at this point, I'm just asking, the R F P was supposed to be into me by December sixth. I'm just asking for us to extend it a little more. Like I said, I've never done one. I just underestimated, you know, as the feedback I'm getting from them, that it's going to take longer with the site visits, the talking.
Yep.
Answering the questions. Um, so that's all I'm asking for at this point.
Yep.
Um, and if you want to still consider, you know, if we add more to the budget, we can bring that to the next budget committee, or we can rediscuss it at your next December meeting, we can bring it to the budget committee.
I think it, and obviously, if you're meeting with some of these people, you, you know, you're probably gonna, you're probably gonna pick their brain a little bit and get some idea. I'm sure probably, that, probably the figures are all over. I mean, I'm, again, I'm not an I T person, but I suspect that the one-sixteen probably isn't enough. But that's, I could be wrong. So, yeah, I don't have a problem with extending it.
I need it.
No, no. Do what you gotta do. All right? Any other old business?
I have no, oh, I have no other old business, but we do have a non-public with the town, the tax code, and.
Okay.
Hey, you got fire chief, real quick.
Uh, sorry, I'm sorry.
I know I asked for a lot today. I do wanna thank you guys for, not only the toilets. The garage, and you went forward. As much as I inherited a terrible, I don't wanna say terrible.
Yeah.
As much as I inherited, we, I also inherited the building, and I'm trying to get that stuff.
Yep, yep. Yep.
Yeah, Patrick did.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Sorry, sorry to hold you up. Oh, you're gonna wait for me?
I'll copy your mind.
All right, I, I'll be, yeah.
So you need a motion to go, um.
Thank you.
Yeah.
To go into non-public, and I'll be never seen, better seen.
Sure, so moved.
So Ruth and Travis, all right, let me, let me show everything off here. Roll call.
Travis here.
John, play.
It's still live and recording.
Recording stopped.
Boy.
It's a spreadsheet. Should be met with more enthusiasm.